I know you are. You're doing a good job. I'm not complaining anymore. We've only been here for two months. So when I came in, when I moved in and I looked out the window, I started to cry. But I'm better now. I know you guys are going to cry. I don't know what you're crying about. I don't know what you're crying about. I don't know what you're crying about.
Good evening. How y'all doing? Everybody enjoying the rain we're getting? We needed it, right? And maybe not. There you go. Well, thank you all first of all for coming out to the first of three budget meetings that will be held this year. There'll be one this month, obviously. Now there'll be one in August and another one in September. What we're going to talk about tonight, I want to bring everybody up to date. We've got some new people here, some older residents. So we're going to talk about what the HOA fee history has been for Brookridge, what the operating budget history has been since 2017, excuse me, 2014, reserve funding, and the amendment to the deed restrictions that will be proposed this year. The amendment to the deed restrictions we're going to talk about in this meeting, I'll present, talk with you about it. It'll be in, we'll talk about it again in August and again in September to make sure everybody understands exactly what it's intended to do, okay? The, if you picked up, one of the, everybody who picked up budget, shoots them back in the bag, okay? Those have not been proposed yet. The board hasn't looked at it. The finance committee hasn't fully put one together. So when you're looking at that, that's some ideas and some concepts, what it's looking at. I'll take the sticker shot away for you real quick. If you've got one, just look over the first page and look at the back of the first page and that bottom right-hand section of that, section over there, can't even think of what I'm talking about. You'll see it says forty-seven dollars and a few cents, okay? That, for that budget, based on where Brookridge has been, is what the HOA fees would go to if that budget were presented, if that budget were passed, okay? Don't, please don't go out from here saying, "They're going to forty-seven bucks." Because it has not been proposed by the finance committee, it has not been proposed to the board, the board has reviewed it. Those are some figures we've asked to have put together to see where we're at. We'll talk more specifically about the proposed budget next month in our town hall meeting. So we'll be addressing strictly the proposed budget for 2020 along with the amendment changes that would be proposed. Then in September, we're going to talk about the reserve funding. We'll go over that and you'll get some information on the history of what's thought about, if you're not familiar with what reserve funding is, tonight, but we'll be talking about that specifically in our September meeting. If you've got a pencil or paper, I'm going to give you an email address because it's a real tough one to write down. It's G like George, M like Mary, at Brookridge.com. G M at Brookridge.com. That goes directly into the, into the admin building. What we're going to ask people to do from this meeting, from the August meeting and from the September meeting, is if you have questions, please email the questions in or write them down and take them into the office and give them to them. We will, so that we can specifically address those questions as we go forward, so that we can give you feedback on things too, okay? Questions? Okay. There is going to be a handout when we get done. I've got them over here. I'm not giving them to you now because it's going to be the same thing you're going to see on the screen. It's been my practice in the history of, once I presented it, to get paperwork in front of you. Some people are way behind, some are way ahead, and somebody has questions and the question already got answered. So it just, it keeps us all on the same page going this route, okay? Questions? We're good? Okay. So again, we're going to talk about the HOA fee history, the operating budget history, the reserve funding, and the amendment to the deed restrictions. So the HOA fee history, we've heard a lot of talk about our HOA fees in Brookridge. I heard when I, after I first moved in, every year they're increasing, every year the increase is going up and up and up and up. It's, it's good for you to know what the HOA history has been in Brookridge. In 2004, our HOA fee was thirty-four dollars. In 2005, it stayed at thirty-four dollars. In 2006, it went to thirty-six dollars. In 2007, 2008, 2009, 2010, and 11, it stayed at thirty-eight dollars. 2012, it went all the way up to thirty-nine dollars. 2013 and 14, it was forty and stayed respectively at forty through 2014. 2015, it went to forty-one, stayed that way through sixteen and seventeen. In 2018, it went to forty-three dollars a month, and currently at 2019, we're at forty-three dollars a month. So our HOA fees have gone up from 2004 to 2019, a total of nine dollars. I'll let that sink in for just a second. Nine dollars in sixteen years. It's increased a little bit over fifty-six cents a year. That is fifty-six point two five, a point two five in that for you. So when we look at HOA fees and what past budgets have done, and what past administrations have done, the boards and the administration, I think you almost really got to agree with me and hope that our HOA fees have not been that big of an increase as we've gone through when you look around at some other places that folks live. Do they have bigger homes maybe than we've got? Some of them do. Brookridge, to give you an idea, I'm nineteen, what's the place? Timber Pines. Timber Pines has thirty-four hundred and seventy-two homes and villas. Brookridge has twenty-eight hundred and thirty, thirty-four, somewhere in there. Timber Pines is a total of fourteen hundred acres. Brookridge is a total of sixteen hundred acres. I have no idea how big their maintenance crew and their street crews are in Timberwood or Timber Pines, but I know that we've got building and two people. So for keeping things going on our, on our HOA fees, not, not that bad a deal anywhere along the line. The Brookridge Operating Fund. I can take a drink. In 2014, three hundred and eighty-five people voted, fifteen percent of Brookridge, about a forty-two dollar HOA fee. They voted that down. It stayed at forty dollars, and we dealt with a budget of a million two hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred dollars. Ray, three hundred and eighty-five people voted. Do you know how many people, how many votes can be casted in Brookridge on that? I didn't have that figured in.
Total votes, Ray? Twenty-four, sixty-seven, something like that? Twenty-four hundred?
Okay, twenty-four hundred and sixty-seven, somewhere in there. In 2015, three hundred and eighty-nine people voted, fifteen percent, for a forty-one dollar a month HOA. They voted yes. It stayed at forty-one from there. And we had two sixty-eight, five twenty-eight budget. In 2016, five hundred and four people voted, for a total of nineteen percent in regards to a forty-two dollar a month HOA fee. They said no. We stayed at forty-one dollars. The budget remained consistent at a million two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. In 2017, two hundred and fifteen people voted, a total of eight percent, for forty-one dollar a month. They voted that in. It stayed the same as it was the year before, stayed at forty-one dollars. The budget that we work with was a million two sixty-eight, six twenty-five. In 2018, four hundred and ninety-three people voted, eighteen percent of the population of Brookridge that are allowed to vote, for a forty-three dollar a month HOA fee. They said yes. Forty-three dollars is what it went to. We dealt with a budget of one million two sixty-eight, six twenty-five. In 2019, four hundred and eighteen people voted, fifteen percent of the population, in regards to a forty-four dollar a month HOA fee. They said no. It stayed at forty-three dollars a month, and we dealt with a budget that year of 2019, current year of a million two thirty-four, five twenty-five. So 2014, we were dealing with fifteen percent of the people voting, forty dollar a month HOA fee, a million two seventy-four, two hundred. In 2019, four hundred and eighteen people voted, fifteen percent, forty-four percent for a forty-four dollar a month HOA fee. It was voted down. We stayed at forty-three dollars, and we dealt with a budget of a million two thirty-four, five twenty-five. The budget has decreased thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars from 2014 to 2019. Now you might be wondering why the budget decreased. Well, the reason for the decrease of 2018 to 2019, thirty-four thousand, one hundred dollars, was due to the proposed budget being voted down. Funds had to be moved from the operating budget to the reserve funding to keep the reserve fund at the level that it needed to be. We took that, those monies out of the operating budget. They were taken out of attorney fee areas and moved over. Now, this is, this is, this comment's not made to make anybody feel better or think people are good guys or whatever, but the board could have looked at things other than moving funds from, from the attorney's fees. They could have looked and said, "Well, what did it cost us to run the clubhouse and pool for a day? And how many days we need to close to make up the difference in that?" But that's, that's not what it's all about. It's trying to keep amenities going in the, in the, in the way that benefits all the people all the time. So the decision was maybe to take it out of attorney fees. That meant out of the operating fund, we had to decrease some things, and we had to cut, cut things here and there, small little items. When you looked around, you probably went, "Well, it got voted down and good. It didn't hurt us too bad. We're still moving along pretty good." But inside everything, it's, it's another story, okay? Questions on the budget that we've talked about so far? I took seven categories from the budget, trying to relate it to what I could relate to, and I think maybe you could relate to. We, I took wages, because we can all relate to, no wages, health insurance, electricity, water and sewer, telephone, insurance. Those, and building maintenance, keeping your house up. Those seven categories, we, I think pretty much all deal with on a day-to-day basis with our own homes. So I felt those were good categories to look at and, and see where things dealt. Well, I looked at wages from 2014 to 2018. In 2014, the wages were six hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and four dollars and thirty-three cents. In 2018, seven hundred and six thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents, an increase of forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents over those four years. That's a seven point two eight percent increase or a one point four six average per year. Any employer that you talk to, if they can keep their wage increase anywhere under two percent, on average every year, they'd be taking it to death. We kept ours at one four six. Health insurance, category that sometimes we don't have too much control over, but we can look at different things. In 2014, it was thirteen thousand, sixty-eight dollars and twelve cents. In 2018, twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. It increased ten thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents or eighty-three point sixteen percent increase over those four years, sixteen point six three average per year. Category that we, we have to deal with and, and don't have an awful lot of wiggle room anywhere along the line. Now I want to remind you, I see a number of people writing, and that's okay. I'm glad, I'm glad, right? Questions down? But just to remind you, everything that we're seeing here, I've got copies over here, if I can take one, we're family. We've got about forty copies, and I think that'll take care of everybody, but everything that you're going to see on the screen, you're going to have it funny at the same point later for you to review also. Electricity, I don't know about yours, but mine's going up. Hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and eleven cents. It cost Brookridge in 2014 and 2018, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and ten cents. Actually decreased eleven hundred and seventy-one dollars and one penny. We changed a lot of light bulbs, LEDs, put a lot of different timers in place, did some things to try and reduce the cost, and it helped us. So over that period of time, it was a negative point nine three percent or a negative point one nine percent on average per year. So a good job reducing that, bringing it into line. Water and sewer. Twenty-fourteen, fifty-eight hundred, forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Twenty-eighteen, ten thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars and two cents, an increase of forty-three hundred, eighty dollars and four cents. It's a seventy-four percent increase, fourteen point nine seven per year. Telephone, anybody's telephone not going up? Twenty-fourteen, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. Twenty-eighteen, twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven, eleven. Three thousand, ninety dollars and fifty-five cent increase over those four years for an average of thirty-one point seven one percent, but the average is six point three four per year. Insurance, fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and seven cents, fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-five and twelve cents in 2018, an increase of twenty-four hundred and three dollars and five cents, four point three percent increase, point eighty-seven per year. Building maintenance, just keep up with your hopes. In 2014, thirteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. In 2018, twenty-eight thousand, one sixty-seven, eighty, an increase of fifteen thousand, one dollars and twelve cents, hundred and thirteen point nine three percent increase, our average of twenty-two point seven nine per year. Building maintenance has nothing to do, by the way, with our, with our roads and keeping up with asphalting and taking care of the roads. So we've got wages, we've got health insurance, we've got electricity, we've got water and sewer, we've got telephone, we've got insurance, we've got building maintenance. So where does that leave us with things? Well, wages was seven point two eight percent increase. Health insurance was an eighty-three point sixteen percent increase. Electricity was a point ninety-three percent decrease. Water and sewer was a seventy-four point eighty-seven increase. Telephone was a thirty-one point seventy-one increase. Insurance was a four point three seven increase. And building maintenance was a hundred and thirteen point ninety-three. Now if you're a real good mathematician, then well, anybody want to take a wow, guess what that comes up to? Three hundred and fourteen point four oh percent increase over four years. You remember when we talked about budgets? Where the budgets had been, where the HOA fees had been, and where things had been at? I wanted you to try and be as aware as you can, again, nowhere along the line, are we laying this out to try and scare people? Because that's, that's not worthwhile anywhere along the line. But we want to try and inform you as much as possible on budgets, what the budget is, what the budget isn't, where things stood, where things stand, how much we're paying HOAs, how much we paid in HOAs, where things are all at. Questions?
What is the building maintenance attack we consist of?
What is the building maintenance if it's not for roads? We have a gentleman here that can answer that question just right off the top of his head. Mr. Jerome, our general manager. What is the building maintenance for if it's not roads?
Well, it's definitely not roads. It's for building, you've got paint, floors, supplies, Kleenex, rags, Windex.
Toilet paper?
Toilet paper. Lots and lots of toilet paper.
Coffee, everything you think of. Covers a variety of things from all the different elements that Brookridge deals with. We'll turn, we're going to talk about elements in a minute, so you'll know what I'm saying when I, when I say elements when it comes in. Does that answer your question for you? A little bit? Okay. The other part that you hear about in Brookridge, when, when we talk about budgets, and we talk about forty-two or forty-three or forty-seven or whatever the HOA fee is, and we're talking about budgets, it's, it's not just the operating budget. It's, it's what those total fees come into, and how much of it needs to go to fully fund the reserve fund, which is, we're going to deal with the elements here in a second, how much it needs there, and what's left over from that to deal with the budget. So if, if like last year, the, the increase, the budget was voted down, the only option was to take the funds we had, just like you do at home, take the money you need to set aside for those items that you know you're going to have to replace and fix and take care of, they're going to wear out, and you'll work with the money that's left. So we took the thirty-four thousand, one hundred dollars out, put it in the reserve to fully fund the reserve, like we need to and are supposed to, and all we need to, and the difference left is with the reduced operating budget, okay? Okay. So the reserve fund. The reserve fund has several different names, and there's eight elements in it that we deal with in that that are always staying the same. The first one is the administration. The second one is the clubhouse elements. The third one is the clubhouse pool and recreation, maintenance and RV storage, maintenance of equipment, security, site elements, and finally vehicles. Now, when the money comes in, that thirty-four thousand, one hundred last year that I spoke of, what happens to that? How does it get broken down? Well, administration gets three point five one percent assigned to administration. Now the administration is the air conditioning, ceilings, light fixtures, those type of things down at the administrative office. Clubhouse elements, clubhouse elements gets six point seven seven percent. Clubhouse elements, the air conditioner, the floors, the audio, visual equipment, kitchen, those type of things, that's clubhouse elements. Clubhouse pool and recreation gets two point six three percent. Those are things like the pool heater, the tennis courts, the shuffleboard, horseshoes, pavilion, the fencing that are around there. Those are clubhouse pool and recreation. Maintenance and RV storage gets point six three percent. Maintenance and RV storage doesn't have a thing to do with, with RVs and RV compounds, got to do with the fencing that's around it and the maintenance building that's there. Those are the two areas that maintenance and RV storage does. Then you've got maintenance of equipment, two point seven six percent. That goes towards the mowers, the gators, the tractor, generators, drainage pumps that Brookridge has to take care of and keep going. And then security. Security gets three point five one percent. Now, security is the vehicle gates, in and out gates, the pedestrian gate, the guard house, monitoring equipment, the AC system in the guard house, those all fall under security for that three point five one. Site elements get seventy-seven point six nine percent. That's a pretty good size figure. Site elements though deals with the asphalt pavement, flood pumps that are on the top hole, man that, irrigation system, the perimeter fence, the drainage, the catch basins, the guard railings, storm damage, telling a few things that are, that are covered by site elements. And then you got vehicles, they get two point five one percent of that. That takes care of the four VCPO vehicles that, that VCPO has and maintains and deals with, and then one left trailer that we've got. So when you look at, at going into reserve, and that can be down to a hundred percent. So that thirty-four thousand, one hundred gets split exactly like that. Doesn't matter if it's thirty-four thousand, one hundred, or thirty-eight thousand, or forty-two thousand, or thirty thousand, it always gets split by those percentages, unless something drops out of an area and they have to be changed. That hasn't happened for a good while. But that's the eight elements that are in the reserve fund that we deal with, okay? People got that? Okay. It gets to be a lot to deal with sometimes. It gets to be a lot to deal with sometimes. So. Any questions? Mr. Ford?
I was looking at the May report, which is in our news and views. If you look at the news and views, you're going to see the reserve account had one million, seven hundred, six thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. I understand that's only me, but if you follow me, you'll get my point. If I had a million dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars in my checking account, and didn't have to spend it on anything, where would I put it? Would I want to make a quarter of a percent or less on any investment? Well, if you look at that same report for me, the income for five months through May is thirteen hundred, eighteen dollars and sixty cents. Look at news and views, it's there. Well, a lot of you know I have an accounting background. A master's degree and, look, I don't want to blow my horn. Point is, thirteen hundred dollars over five months for one million, seven hundred thousand dollars. If that was me, I would be very, very embarrassed. Because if you compare thirteen hundred to one million, seven hundred thousand, your investment return, now, maybe you're thinking one percent. The return on that investment for five months is point oh seven of a percent. That means point zero zero, zero seven. I wouldn't want you investing my money at that rate. When I was on the board, for about five months, I was, let me use the polite words, but affected with a bifurcated statement. And I yelled out to everybody here, BS! Bifurcated statement. They took my facts, took what they wanted, and whatever. Okay, that's history, let's move on. We can certainly do better than that. And I've done my research because of my background. And if you pick the worst bank you can find in Florida, the least they'll pay you is one point seven, which is about forty or fifty percent more than what we've got so far. If you picked the worst bank you can find. I've also researched banks. And when I was torn down, and when I yelled out BS, walked out of here, the then president tried to claim I was carelessly trying to invest the monies of the association. And that's when I yelled out and walked out and wanted nothing more to do with the bank. I've since made more research to reinforce my position. There's at least five banks within the state of Florida that will pay us a minimum of two percent and some up to two point eight five percent on our investment. If you did that, we'd be getting between forty-two to forty-eight thousand dollars a year, which will cover the problems we're having with budget and budget reserve and funding.
Thank you. Was there a question there, Mr. Ford?
Yes. My question, why are we sleeping on one million, seven hundred thousand dollars? And don't tell me it's not there anymore. It's moving water. It may not be one million, seven now because of what we spent on roads. But it'll get there back again. And how are we going to invest the money? I tried and got shut down.
Our money is invested in the vehicles that the state of Florida allows us to invest it in. Some of those investments are, we just moved one for a two point, right, two point five six, somewhere in there?
No, two's the most we have.
Um, so we just moved some money into one of those because of rates that come back up. The rates that we're getting on older CDs are the rates that we're being paid. As those move through, we'll investigate that. That particular question, we'll answer specifically in September when we talk and deal with the reserve fund. Because that's where the money's sitting at at that point.
You need, why did you make so little in five months?
Because of where the money is invested.
Now, how much is invested? Which is very little, which is the issue.
Mr. Ford, if you ask a question, I allowed you time to sit and talk.
Okay. I agree, I'm sorry, I apologize.
And I accept your apology, thank you. As funds move, we can move funds. But we cannot invest the money in areas where the state of Florida says we cannot.
Now, that's BS!
All right, Ford?
That's a legitimate task, we should investigate it.
Please.
BS!
Mr. Ford?
Okay, I'll shut up, go on.
Sir, I come up here for a town hall meeting. And, you know, if you've got a personal problem, then deal with it, but let's move on.
I agree.
We'll deal with that. Again, though, Mr. Ford, for you in the September when we talk about the reserve funds. Now, under any questions? Mr. Grant?
Well, Scott, in unit three. What is our contribution that we're going to need to pay in two thousand twenty?
I believe that figures on that twenty-twenty report, or you've got like, is that what you're scanning? Reserve side says we need to put four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars in the reserve. Any other questions? If you do, please, gm@brookridge.com. If you wake up at three o'clock this morning and go, I wish I'd asked that question, okay? Don't be like me and think I'll do it in the morning because I'll forget. You know, I can send you an email, let us know what your questions are. The whole purpose that we want to put these together is to try and do something different this year than I believe was done past years. And to try and get everybody so they've got knowledge of it. So if you're out there talking to somebody and they come up with something way over here, you know, the pool's got a sinkhole under it, that was one of them going around. You know, you can say, no, 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 here's, here's the facts and figures on it, okay? Okay. There's going to be a proposed amendment that was last year to the deed restrictions. Last year, they got convoluted, the wording was not good on it. It didn't get explained well. People were looking around trying to figure out what it meant. Some figured they had what it meant, but they figured was not exactly what it was meant. So I want to go over it with you. Here's the amendment. I'll give you a minute to read that. You're not going to be able to read that, it's too small for handling that, okay? So I'm going to go over this with you in sections, okay? And I'm going to tell you what sections we're going to talk about as we go through. Section twenty-seven right there, down to this area right here, we're going to talk about first. And then we'll take each section as we go down through so that we can, you can hear what's there and what's going on. So section twenty-seven currently reads, currently reads, write in the BCPO, BCPO to charge fee for the use of community pool. That's in a deed restrictions right now. Persons twelve years of age or older using the BCPO community pool must have a BCPO issued pool card used in their possession at the time they enter the pool area and shall display same to any BCPO employee or representative upon request. That's exactly how it reads in the deed restrictions. The proposed change to that would be this in red. Write in the BCPO to charge fee for use of the community pool, same in the fifth, and exclusive use of amenities. Exclusive is the key word to this whole thing. Keep that in mind. Everything else in that section twenty-seven, in that first paragraph, stays exactly the same as it currently is. The next section down from that is lettered A. It's brand new. It states the following shall apply regarding the community pool. So there's no misconception. The next section is dealing with the community pool. Currently, that next section is A. It reads, for safety reasons, individuals under the age of twelve years must be accompanied by a parent or guardian when using the BCPO community pool. That would change and A would come out. It would be number one. And for safety reasons, individuals under the age of twelve years must be accompanied by, new wording, a responsible person who can swim, taking out the words apparent or guardian. If my, if somebody falls in the water and they're under twelve, I'd really rather, I'm glad that I'm a parent, but if I can't swim, I want somebody around that can. So that would be the only changes to that section. A would become one. And the words apparent or guardian would be removed and replaced with a responsible person who can swim. The next section is B. It stays the same. Owners may obtain from the BCPO administrative office free of charge pool of use cards for themselves and their family members related by blood, marriage, or adoption who are twelve years of age and older and who are currently occupying the owner's home with the owner and are properly registered at the BCPO administration office. That's the way it currently reads. The change that would go in that would be, B would be changed to number two. The top part would stay the same. The following would be added to the bottom. All other persons residing in an owner's home who do not qualify for a free pool of use card who are currently occupying an owner's home and registered with a BCPO office shall pay a ten dollar fee to obtain a pool card. So if I wasn't married and I decided I was going to move my girlfriend in with me, she is, she would fall under that section because she is not related by blood, marriage, or adoption.
I get a question, that ten dollars, that per year?
That'd be, that'd be a ten dollar fee for the card. Period. It'd be the same if you lost your card, you went to get a duplicate, it's going to cost you ten bucks for the card. That's all. And this would be the same thing going forward.
How about renters?
I'm sorry?
Renters. They qualify.
Renters fall into the next section and you'll see that, thanks for asking that though. Okay? Item C would become number three. The BCPO shall have the right to charge a reasonable fee for the issue of pool cards for renters, live-ins, and guest guests. Set fees will be set forth in the rules and regulations. The only thing that changed on that is it's no longer, would no longer be C, it would be number three. So that covers the renters, lives-in, events, and guests.
Would that be the ten dollars?
I'm sorry?
Would that be the ten dollars for the previous screen?
Uh, under the rules and regulations, it is a ten dollar fee for the guests.
Current.
Currently, yes. I'm sorry? Yes, the reason is, is if you put the ten dollar fee in there, that's in deed restrictions. That's voted on by the people at annual meetings. And you have to have a certain percentage to approve a deed restriction, okay? And so if ten dollars was in there and BCPO decided that they really needed to go up to fifteen because it's been at ten for the last twenty years, you've got to do it, you've got to go through the whole thing. Where it's covered by rules and regulations. They can look at the rules and regulations and see what the fee is, and they can change it by board action at that point.
Years ago, you had to buy a five dollar pass and then anytime a visitor came in that was visiting you, you were with them, and they would punch out one of the guests.
Yeah, you still have, you still have guest pass. When my kids come down, I buy one so that they're able to go to the pool with us. So those are still there. Between what? Between a pool pass and a punch card?
What's the difference between, I see live-ins and renters, but what about guests? You mean more permanent guests?
No, well, you're covered here under your renters, live-ins, and your guests.
The guests for a pool?
That's, that's your pool card. That's, and then it depends on where they are in that. The, is where it would fall under the rules and regulations. Whether they're a guest for the five dollar pool card or whether they're a renter or a live-in.
Oh, okay, it just includes all of them.
It includes all of them, and then you look at the rules and regulations. And then, and now you look to see what category they are, and it lists it when it's applied to them.
So really, guests continue to, we get to pool, a punch card?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The only thing that changes on that from the way it's been is just C is talking, that's talking, and number three, it becomes number three. Okay? Yes, sir. Wait a minute, can white back yours so we can hear you again?
I was just curious.
Name of your company?
Pete Deal, unit six. I'm just curious why renters are in there. They are permanent residents of this community. And their rent indirectly is paying the monthly fee, just like ours does. I would guess this was done many, many years ago, I mean, renters were there then. My thing is, why are they there?
Why are renters there since they live here and they pay through their rent the same HOA fees and everything that we do? Is that, is that written as your question? Because we want to? No. It was written a good while ago. It, it was written a good while ago, but there are things that the renter is not able to do versus a homeowner. So they, they draw a distinction and a line between them. It's just, it's the way it's been. And unless, unless there was a groundswell of people from Brookridge that said we, we need to change that section, it would, it would probably stay that, will stay that way.
Yeah, I, I, I see all of that.
I do.
To me, it's as well, it's not wrong. But I guess forty years ago.
Renters are already paying maybe a thousand to two thousand dollars a month to the people they're renting from, the people that own the house. You're already paying them. And it's up to the owners of the place to pay that forty-three dollars, whatever it is.
Correct. Anything else? The one section that's added it now is entitled B because you've changed, you've got A up there. Remember, A isn't, regards to everything there belongs to the pool and there's one, two, three down through there. B would be added and the wording of B is currently, the BCPO may charge a reasonable fee for exclusive use of any BCPO amenity. For purposes of this section, quote, exclusive use, end quote, will mean that the amenity or a specific part of the amenity is taken or reserved for the use of one owner to the exclusion of other owners. Example. You can, you can look around and think about it. Somebody said, well, I wanna, I wanna bring my trick group in here and we're gonna have a tennis tournament. We need to, we, we wanna take over one court. They not have exclusive use of that. This has nothing to do with the pool. That's why that is put in at A. The following shall apply regarding the community pool. And we cover all the aspects of the community pool and what's there. This relates to the fact that if, if I wanted to, to get exclusive use of the horseshoe pits or, you know, whatever, I can't, I can't do exclusive use of the golf course because it doesn't belong to BCPO. But if you do, that means nobody else can deal with it other than me and the people I'm dealing with or invited. So this is saying the BCPO may charge, not say will. It says may charge a reasonable fee for the exclusive use of any BCPO amenity. For purposes of this section, exclusive use, quote, end quote, will mean that the amenity or a specific part of the amenity is taken or reserved for the use of one owner to the exclusion of other owners. That's the last section. And that's, what you're looking at now is the entire thing broken down. You've got copies of all this that you'll be able to get when you leave, so you, you won't have to try and remember it. Uh, you won't have to try and guess what it does or call, call somebody and say, what did he say about that again? It's, it's gonna be right there in your hand. You're gonna look at it and read it. Maybin, you can start.
My name's Terry Hemmings. I'm in Unit Four. Um, by your own words, you said that reasonable fee gives the board the right to raise the price if you need to. That's one of my big objections to that section right there. I know what you're talking about. You and I have had this discussion about the RV compound. And yes, I have a spot there. I make my donation every year and I understand a lot of people do not. But reasonable fee lets the board change and increase that every year. And as I've said over and over again, I don't think it's appropriate to balance the budget on the backs of two-hundred-and-seventy people that have a spot over there. I'm not opposed to a reasonable fee, but let's set down what that fee is.
And I understand what you're saying. And it would be, if it wasn't controlled, we'd be looking to try to balance it on the backs of two-hundred-and-forty-five, two-hundred-and-forty-six places, somewhere in there. The thing that the deed restriction allows you to do is to be able to charge the fee. That fee then needs to be spelled out. It would be covered under the rules and regulations. So, so there would be a written fee in there as, as relates to, to rules and regulations, Terry. Rules and regulations with the fees, rules and regulations can be looked at by the board, all of them. Uh, the, the amounts on there on a, on a, on an annual basis or whatever they want to see where things are at and, and what needs to be decreased or increased. So for me, that would be covered under rules and regulations is where you would state the dollar amount. If you, if you set a dollar amount in here again, then you tie it in anytime it needs to be changed. Has to go to a board, a vote of the, of the entire association and we've seen what kind of percentages we get in there. Uh, that would come up, the rules and regulations and, and the discussion of that would be, would come up at, at a workshop where it would be, and it's the public side, we put those out about a week and a half. About a week and a half before, uh, the board meetings, whether it's the Tuesday workshop or the, or the Wednesday board meetings. Those, those, if you, if you email us out there, you're getting copies of, of what the agenda's gonna be. So people would be aware that we were gonna be looking at that and be able to be their voice of opinion.
All right. Let me ask another question. Right now, we park things over there at our own risk. If you start charging me a, a fee for a space, are you assuming the liability for any damage to what I have parked there?
No.
I think you might find out that you are.
We might have to, but so far the attorneys advise us, no. Cause I found out when I breathed it all.
Who's seen the water, Unit Four, I've heard that before. Is that one of the things that will be voted on about the RV compound?
Yeah, what you're looking at, this whole change in this section of the deed restrictions for the, the rewording for the pool and have a, someone that can swim rather than apparent guardian.
Which is a good thing.
Those, that, that whole section will be in the proposed amendment because it's, it's covered under deed restrictions as a whole right now and it would be proposed as a whole and voted on as a whole.
Okay. Everybody votes on it and I know it's gonna be by mail this time instead of odds and ends, people coming in and voting.
It's gonna, there could be three ways to vote, by the way.
Right, I know.
It's gonna be mailed out, in-person, and electronic.
All homeowners will be able to vote.
That's correct.
Um, is that where you're gonna be specific about the amount that will be charged?
No.
You can't.
You, you can't be specific with there unless you're gonna lock it in again with that, like that ten-dollar charge on, on the guest pass, put it in, locks it, and then if you're gonna do, do any change, it's gotta go the long way around.
If we're voting on it and yet I understand his concerns, how will it pass if, because you know, the majority of the people maybe don't have that space to be concerned about how it's gonna be charged, how much is gonna be charged? When is that decision gonna be made and only by the board?
The board would take rules and regulations. It would have to be presented as an agenda item at the board, to the board. The board would then talk about it, bring it up at a meeting and it would be discussed and again the Tuesday mornings, the board already, if agenda items brought up, the, the board brings it up. If the motion is there, second, it carries through with it. Then the board discusses it and the floor's open for people to discuss it on Tuesdays. On a Wednesday night, board meetings, if it's brought up, you need it when you walk in because on Wednesday night at the board meeting, there's either sign-up sheet in back. There is on Tuesdays also, but there's a sheet to fill out if you want to speak to a specific item. And, and so it would be on a Wednesday night, you'd walk in, sign up, fill out the sheets out, you want to speak on that and make sure that it goes to Mr. Joel Thabel. He'll get it to us up front. So it, the board discusses it, you'll be, you would be called up to be able to speak to it.
Yes, and the final thing is the board will vote on it after hearing everything.
The board would vote on it, yes.
Okay, so you're, you're telling people, okay, two-hundred, no. Twenty-six-hundred votes, is that how many votes?
Give or take, yeah, pretty close.
Per, yeah, per household, one vote per household.
Correct.
Is going to affect whether or not that will be acceptable and only, and the two-hundred and some people that had something in there will take on the burden.
If, if, if we're talking specifically about the RV compound.
Correct, correct.
Yes. But this doesn't, this doesn't address RV compound or, or any amenity. It talks about the board being able, having the ability to may charge it for an amenity in Brookridge that where exclusive use is taken, that could be, could be, you know, if you decided you wanted to rent out the pool and bring your, bring your crew in, okay, now you're gonna have to feed because now you've got exclusive use to the pool versus everybody else. They'll be standing at the gate and they'll watch.
Okay, I'm just trying to wrap my head.
I am, I understand. I didn't mean to be, I'm sorry. I have this weird humor. I saw a hand back here. I thought, Mr. Roy first? No?
Wouldn't the fee be subject to budget approval and submitted through the budget, which was, I believe, the last time?
For exclusive use under rules and regulations?
Strictly the RV compound. I thought last time, nothing could happen because it had to pass through the budget. The budget was proposing fees for the RV compound. And if it was passed with the budget, then a fee would be set up for the RV.
The first, the first budget, the budget proposal that was, was proposed and put forward had that listed in there. Our attorney said, A, unless it's approved, you can't put it in there. B, you don't, you don't set it out by itself anyway. It goes with other income. And because it had not been approved under deed restriction changes, it was completely taken out of the proposed budget under the first draft that was in there. But later draft should not have the figure in there.
Assistant Austin, Unit Two. Uh, question, if someone died here in the park and they wanted a memorial service up here like they had sometimes, do you rent that out or do you charge for that?
That would, if, if, I'll pick on me. If, if I died and somebody decided to hold memorial service for me and it was gonna be here, I, I know. Who has?
I didn't.
No, that's okay. But it, it was gonna hold memorial service here for a Brookridge resident inviting Brookridge residents to that memorial service, even if some other outside people came, no. Because that's not exclusive use for, for an owner, okay? And the, the, exclusive use is made for specific, taken, reserved for the use of one owner to the exclusion of all other owners. And this wouldn't be for the, just one owner, it would be for Brookridge in general.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Others? Folks, I really thank you for coming. Again, gm@brookridge.com, okay? Please, if you've got questions or something clicks later and you're like, I never thought of that. Or you're looking through the handouts, we're gonna get one per family, please, because we only got all forty over there. I'm tired. Make it copies, but that's okay. Actually, Mr. Joel, make the copies for me. But please, get your questions, okay? And there's, there's no silly questions, okay? When it comes down to budgets, I'm a firm believer that we need to be, we, we need to be able to understand where, where we've been, kind of where we're going, and then how the budget falls in, where things come into play, where the reserve fund comes into play. So that when we come down to voting, we're making a more intelligent decision rather than seeing the thing, you know, two weeks before you're gonna vote and you're looking at it and go, man, it's all on pages. I don't know what I want to do. Okay? Thank you very much for coming. Have a great evening. If you didn't get it on it for so long, grab some of your way up.